Good evening. It is a special meeting of the City Council of Lewisville, Colorado, August 12, 2025. Let's take a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Okay, would you join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, and we go hand in hand with liberty as our goal.
Thank you. We have really two items on our agenda. The first is an executive session. The second is a flock camera update. If we ought to do then is go to that executive session item. And I'll give it to Melinda, our Deputy City Attorney.
As noted on the meeting agenda, the city attorney is requesting an executive session for the purpose of consultation with attorneys representing the city with respect to pending litigation pursuant to Section 52D of the city's Home Rule Charter and CRS Section 2464024B. Prior to entertaining any motion, the interim city clerk will read a statement required by the city code.
It is the policy of the city to conduct public business in meetings open to the public. While in an executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or to make any final decisions. It is the duty of each member to ensure that executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinances may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. One, where federal or state law requires that the information being discussed remain confidential. Two, certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council and other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor. Three, consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy. Four, legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, Section 52D of the charter authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, Section 2464024B of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The request involves a potential lawsuit to seek a judicial determination regarding a matter to come before the city council. With that, Mayor, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you. I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and that the executive session also include city manager Diana Langley, Deputy City Manager Sama Fox, Community Development Director Rob Zaccaro, Deputy City Attorney Melinda Cully. Can we get a roll call?
Yes. Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Okay. Motion passes with six votes, and we will now adjourn to executive session. Thank you. We will be back as quickly as we finish our executive session.
And just to clarify, Rob Zaccaro is not going to be in the executive session, so...
Okay. Then we'll fix that downstairs in our executive session.
Mayor and Council, as noted on the meeting agenda, the executive session was for the purpose of consultation with attorneys representing the city with respect to pending litigation pursuant to Section 52D of the City's Home Rule Charter and CRS Section 246424B. And the City Council had such consultation. No further action is requested of the Council tonight.
Thank you. And thanks to those of you who might have been tuned in before for waiting. And the next item, and really the only substantive item on the general agenda tonight, is a Flock camera update. And I believe we've got a staff presentation. And why don't we jump into that? The one, I want to sort of put a frame around this tonight. I kind of looked forward tonight, and I think the Council is looking forward tonight to understanding more about how the Flock cameras work, how they don't work, how they can be manipulated is the wrong word probably, but how they can be adjusted and so forth to address questions that I'm sure Council members will probably have and members of the public as well. So it's really more of, at least as I see it, more of an information gathering and investigation type conversation that I hope we'll have here. So with that, staff presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. City Clerk, do you have the presentation there? Or do you need me to log in or hook up my computer? Yeah.
As they're doing that, what we're going to do is to have staff presentation and then we'll have a public comment and then Council will discuss after that. So I appreciate that and hopefully the public will have some time too.
I can't hear anything if anything's being said.
Nothing's being said just yet. They're getting the computers set up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Remember, Fay, thanks for letting us know, though. Councilmember Fahy, can you see that?
Yes, I can.
Good. All right. I think we're good.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the technical support. Greetings, Mayor and Council. I'm Rafael Gateras, Chief of Police. I'm joined by Scott Moore, who is the Department's Crime Prevention Specialist, as well as our Public Information Officer. We also have Trevor Chandler, who is a Flock Safety Director of Public Affairs, joining us tonight. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss the Louisville Police Department's use of the Flock ALPR, which is Automated License Plate Reading Technology. I'll provide a brief overview of how the use of Flock in our community began, information on how the system functions, its use in our operations, efforts that we've taken to align its use with council and community preferences, highlight some local successes attributed to its use, our department's strategy for future development, I'm sorry, deployment of the current system. And I'll speak to concerns that we've heard with the system and the safeguards that are in place to address the concerns. Finally, I'll present a few potential options that relate to decisions that you as Council will be asked to consider. We hope to engage in a productive dialogue with you this evening and with the help of Trevor Chandler to answer questions that you may have regarding the technology, data privacy, operational processes, and system access. Before I begin, I do want to make an item of correction just for the record. On your packet, I incorrectly indicated that Flock was not included in the 2026 budget. Received confirmation yesterday from Director Bailey that 77,625 is budgeted for Flock Safety for '26, and it's in the capital fund. I was informed that funds had not yet been loaded into the Finance Department or by the Finance Department into our city's budgeting software system, which is where I went to look for information about '26 budgets. So that's what created the mistake in my communication, but I wanted to make sure that that was on record. That it is, is in fact, has in fact been budgeted for '26. The City Council approved Resolution Number 15- The city council approved Resolution Number 15, Series 2022, on April 18, 2022. At the time, the police department entered into a service agreement with Flock Safety for license plate detection software and 25 cameras. In the summer of 2022, 20 cameras were installed in areas that were significantly affected by the Marshall Fire. In late 2024, I presented to council a two-year service agreement renewal proposal that was eventually modified to a one-year agreement to cover services for calendar year 2025. At the time, I also discussed the possibility of relocating the cameras to more strategic areas that staff believed might increase the system's effectiveness. Concerns were presented to me at the time about the potential relocation of cameras from their original location, and also a concern regarding data privacy safeguards that were related to access by out-of-state law enforcement. The police department was asked at the time to engage the community to obtain feedback on the system and its use in the community, and I will discuss that later, a little bit later in our presentation. The one-year service agreement was approved by council at the end of '24, and the cameras remain in their current location. So there was no change to the cameras' position within our community. Just for awareness, locally, the cities of Lafayette, Broomfield, Erie, and Boulder, as well as Boulder County Sheriff, University of Colorado Police Department, and at least two private businesses in Lewisville utilize the Flock system. Our system was recently disabled on June 30th of this year, pending additional discussion with council on its use. At that time, we were sharing access with about 85 Colorado law enforcement organizations. So just a brief overview on how LPR, ALPRs work. They read license plate information. It's a vehicle license plate alerting system. It compares plate information to hot lists that are created in the National Crime Information Center, as well as Colorado Crime Information Center. It also alerts to Amber Alerts, and it customizes hot lists based on agency needs, so we can create customized hot lists for vehicles of interest in a public safety or law enforcement investigation. So it'll alert to those notifications as well. The system notifies law enforcement of the license plate that's associated with any of those hot lists, and then provides us with indiscriminate evidence from a fixed location of that vehicle plate and its location. How officers in public safety respond to alerts, the system is an effective alerting tool for police staff, and it helps with situational awareness while officers are out in the field. Law enforcement receives a text message, an email, an in-app alert, and within about 20 seconds, when the hot list passes by a Flock Safety camera. The alerts come into the staff. Staff then verifies the information before taking any kind of enforcement action or even responding to the area. Once that information is confirmed as valid and up to date, officers will then proceed to that location to try to locate the vehicle. In general, investigating, law enforcement can use this technology to search for vehicles based on unique identifiers, the make, the model, the color, things of that nature, time, location, to obtain objective investigative evidence. The search fields can include, again, the vehicle make, the body type, color. If a license plate is provided during the original report, we can use that information as well for the search. It searches temporary plates, regular plates, and it does have state recognition, so out-of-state plates, in-state plates, things of that nature. I also believe it's important to note that Flock is not facial recognition. It does not collect any biometric information. It records essentially vehicle registration information and the alert details only. So if there's, if there's an alert to that license plate, such as a missing or endangered person, that's the information that gets flagged and sent to us. It's not used for speed or red light violation traffic enforcement unless it's been integrated into that technology. And we've been doing some research on photo traffic enforcement, and there are several systems that have integrations and partnerships directly with Flock. So that technology is also incorporated in some other areas of law enforcement and public safety. It's not used for immigration enforcement. It's not live monitored by staff. It's an automated system, and our system in Lewisville only uses still photos. So we have no video feeds of our camera system. In addition to what I mentioned, we do have 30-day retention policy for any of the photo scans, and that does align with the city's digital retention policy. So all of the video cameras that are throughout the city organization all maintain that 30-day retention period. So again, we do align with city policy, and then we also align with best practices in law enforcement. The 30 days was addressed at the initial discussion about the system back in 2022. And that 30-day window does provide police and law enforcement the ability to do searches of potential suspect or investigative leads. It allows enough time for that data to remain there so that we can, within a reasonable period of time, get in there and see if that vehicle is associated with a crime report that we have taken. It's used by law enforcement for law enforcement purposes only. We require a case number or reason for search, and that information gets logged in an audit trail. The system also requires verification of the alert information prior to taking any action, as I mentioned earlier. So just want to touch on the transparency portal that exists. Lewisville Police Department has a publicly accessible transparency portal that provides information and links that are related to our policies, contains information about the use of the system. It lists the external organizations that we've granted sharing access to. In December of last year, we did enhance our portal by actually displaying the list of agencies in which we have granted sharing access to. So that information was not on our portal prior to December of last year, but because of the concerns with sharing with out-of-state law enforcement, we made that a component of our transparency portal. So again, all the information has been available for community members or anybody interested in who we are sharing with. The QR code that you see there is, do you see a QR code? Okay, the QR code that you see there is, again, it's information that we have on some of our public information that we distribute and disseminate during any community engagement events that we've had. So Lewisville specific, how do we use it in law enforcement, primarily for investigations, hot list reads, and as a deterrent to criminal activity? So under investigations, we search using any witness description that we may obtain during that initial report. So if somebody says, hey, I saw a black car, you know, about this time of day, they were, you know, checking door handles on vehicles, like, we have a vehicle that we can potentially search for. We now have parameters to search our system. Looking for a black vehicle between these hours on this date could potentially lead to the development of investigative leads. Again, searching by the time, the location, it does provide valuable leads for any ongoing investigation. So our detective unit will use this as a matter of practice, just to see if there's some other component or element that they have to follow up with on the case reports that we're taking. Sometimes it is the only investigative lead that we may have. That may be all the information that we get on scene. And so again, this is just an avenue for us to be able to check additional resources to try to develop any kind of investigative leads. Typically, when a case does not have any investigative leads, we reach to a point, it becomes inactive pending additional information. So that affects clearance rates, that affects potential arrests and things like that. It also supports collaboration with other agencies that may be tied to regional cases, regional investigations. And so we've had, and I will talk about a couple successes that we've had, but we've identified individuals that have been involved in criminal activity that cross jurisdictional boundaries. That is often the case, especially in a metropolitan area like where we are. It's very easy for people to come into a community and commit crimes within multiple jurisdictions. And so that collaborative effort in working with investigators from other departments, again, is another way that this system does support our work and our efforts. The hot list notifications really provides a proactive response. So like I mentioned, it's an alerting tool. So an officer in the field may receive an alert of a stolen vehicle or missing person, things of that nature. They get the alert, they verify that it's a valid alert, they move to the area, they potentially are going to locate that vehicle because they have the awareness that that vehicle may be in that specific location or within our jurisdiction. Absent this system, we would not have that situational awareness. We wouldn't know if a stolen vehicle was coming in unless an officer physically saw the car, ran the plate, and then got the listing. So it kind of saves that initial step. We still have access to that information through our criminal justice portals. An officer can see a vehicle, run a license plate, and be able to see if it's a stolen vehicle or a vehicle of interest. So this just kind of does it in an automated fashion. Well-being checks suicidal persons. We do have an elderly community here in Lewisville. The senior alert, all of those types of alerting mechanisms are also flagged and alerted through the Flock system. As a crime deterrent, Flock cameras can be installed at different points within the city to create what effectively could become a virtual perimeter. Also, our signs do, I'm sorry, our cameras do have signage. And so as people come into areas where Flock cameras are installed, they do see that there is that system in place, could prove to be a deterrent for individuals who are coming into areas. It just kind of hardens the target, for lack of a better term. But it is one of the crime prevention strategies that Scott does educate the community about, is taking away some opportunities, discouraging certain behavior within certain areas. And again, we have found that that can also be a component to this. And just to talk about some of the successes that we've had since the system has been implemented in 2022, from 2022 to 2024, we've seen about a 27% decrease in property crimes across the city. That's in total. That's in areas that have Flock and areas that do not. In areas where we do have Flock cameras installed, we identified a 62% reduction in construction-related theft between 2023 and 2024. And we attribute that to Flock directly. The vehicle that you see pictured there is the suspect vehicle in a ring, a construction theft ring, that was operating across the front range. And so that vehicle was located in Lewisville. The vehicle hit our Flock cameras. Our officers responded, found the vehicle, arrested the suspects, and we were able to work with other jurisdictions to also confirm that that same vehicle was used in those areas as well. So we feel confident that we can attribute that 62% reduction to the success of Flock in that area. In 2022, it assisted with a serial commercial burglary investigation, as well as the arrest of an individual who was committing burglaries in Lewisville and other Denver metro communities. It aided in the capture. I just mentioned that. It did aid in the arrest of an attempted homicide suspect from Lakewood in 2024. So again, that person was tied to a vehicle license plate. Vehicle license plate was scanned on the Flock system. We received the alert, contacted, and then we were able to make an arrest in that case for the Lakewood Police Department. And then there are other examples of how we've located stolen vehicles, found missing and endangered individuals, suicidal individuals throughout our community with the use of Flock. So this is kind of a transition point. So I've talked about how we got here. I've talked about some of the successes that we've had, how we utilize it. You know, looking forward, looking ahead, thankfully, our community is reaching a point where most of the Marshall Fire rebuild is at about 92% complete or in the construction phase, which is a phenomenal achievement. PD staff believes that there may be now a need to implement a different strategy for the use of the technology. Again, I mentioned that this was primarily installed in the Marshall Fire rebuild areas as a tool to enhance our effectiveness, to make sure that we were able to monitor those areas because they were vulnerable areas within our community. Well, those dynamics have changed, and so most of the plates that we're scanning and most of the information that's going into our system are very likely community members that have moved back home. So really, it's not the most effective way to use the system and use the resource. So we believe that if the continued use of this technology is approved by relocating to more strategic places, using data, using trends, using other metrics to best locate these cameras, we're going to see additional successes and probably greater successes than what we've seen to date. So just to touch on the future strategy, this has been presented to council, I think it was last year, at the end of the year, we talked about a potential relocation of our current resource. So again, to enhance effectiveness of the technology, improve situational awareness, using a more strategic deployment strategy is what we would be looking to do. These areas are ingress points. These areas also represent parts of the city that have higher rates of crime, property crime, and things of that nature. So moving these cameras and this resource into those locations, we believe would prove to be a lot more fruitful and a lot better return on our investment. So this is kind of a comparison of the current deployment on the left, and then on the right is again the map that I just showed you. So currently, we have 20 cameras within our system. They're all located essentially on the west part of the community where the Marshall Fire impacted the community most significantly. Again, on the right is kind of the potential future deployment strategy, just a side-by-side comparison for visual reference. So over the last eight to nine months, staff has engaged with community members at a variety of monthly events, or I'm sorry, a variety of events. This includes our monthly community conversations, our coffee with the cop, touch a truck, Taste of Lewisville, and other city-sponsored events that we've attended. We enhance our handout material as well as our educational items. And unfortunately, our display is set up in the library meeting room. So that information was going to be shown as a display. Essentially, that picture represents what we've created. So Scott Moore has created a lot of, you know, visual displays, handout information, other things that really point about the benefits. And then we've also had very frank and candid discussions and conversations about the concerns that some people have with the system. So we have done a lot of community engagement over the last eight to nine months. A majority of the people that we've engaged with have expressed support of the system. They do see it as a value, as a resource for the police department, especially after we have that conversation, and they learn a little bit more about the system, learn about the safeguards that we have in place, learn about our approach to using the system. So we have had pretty positive feedback from community members about this. Of course, there are people that have concerns regarding data privacy, access to the system by external or federal organizations, its use in immigration enforcement, and the potential misuse of the system by some in law enforcement. I think that's all over the news. We know that that's a contemporary topic of concern, and we're well aware of that. We're having those conversations with people. I just want to kind of touch about some of the concerns that we've heard, and then some of the safeguards that we believe are in place to assist with that. As license plate reading technology, as its use in law enforcement has become more and more common over the last 15 to 20 years, concerns about community-wide surveillance, violation of privacy, violation of privacy rights, collection of data for tracking purposes have all been communicated and discussed. We do understand, and we do respect those concerns. We do support the implementation of good policy, good practices to safeguard those privacy concerns, and really, our goal is to meet our community and council's needs and desires. The police department does not grant sharing access to our data with any federal or out-of-state law enforcement organizations. We implement a retention policies that align with our city retention policy and best practices in our region. We host a transparency portal to show system usage. We conduct regular audits. We have an in-house system administrator, Scott Moore, to manage access, use, and training at our department. And we do have staff that's experienced in managing and maintaining privileged information with discretion. Working within the criminal justice field, we have access to a lot of sensitive, personal and privileged information. And it comes down to the management and the accountability component. And in my department, the standard that I set at my agency is that we will hold ourselves to the highest level of accountability and to the highest standards possible. And if somebody makes a mistake, somebody does something wrong, they're going to be held accountable for that. And again, that's dependent on me. That rests with me as the department director, and I firmly believe it, and that's how we continue to conduct our business on a day-to-day basis. We do have positive working relationship with the vendors, so we've been able to address any concerns as they arise. So we have open lines of communication with them. There have been several questions posed to us. We are users of the system. We have a good knowledge and understanding of how the system works. We're not technical experts to the granular degree. And so having the ability to contact our Flock representative and have them address concerns, things that maybe don't align with the way that we want our system to be managed and operate, we have a good relationship with them. And I think, you know, Trevor's presence here tonight is a testament to that. I mean, they really are supportive. They want to be good partners with us, and we have seen that over the last several years. A couple of options that we kind of have developed for council to consider as we look at the Flock or additional ALPR technology. The first would be to cancel the service with Flock Safety for the remainder of 2025, and then to not approve future services for 2026. That would result in the removal of the cameras at whatever earliest possible timeframe could be coordinated with Flock. The cameras themselves, the hardware, belong to Flock. It's their equipment, so that equipment would then go back into their hands. Another option would be to continue the service in 2025, but no renewal for 2026. That option would likely not result in the relocation of any cameras. We wouldn't move forward with any other deployment strategy. We would essentially and effectively just kind of run out the course of our current agreement through the end of this year. We would essentially and effectively just kind of run out the course of our current agreement through the end of this year. And then after 2026, again, camera removal would be coordinated with the vendor based on a timeline that that they're able to to provide us with. Another option is to approve the the department to re-enable our system for the rest of 2025 and then approve a service extension into 2026 and potentially beyond. That option, again, would likely result in the relocating of the current cameras to more optimal optimal and strategic locations. With any of those options, any approval options, again, we we have a willingness to work with council and the community to say, what exactly fits with our needs? What are we looking to do? What balance can be achieved in terms of a law enforcement, public safety need, while also balancing the needs of the community and their concerns with privacy and things of that nature? So so those things are are able to be adjusted. We can adapt to that, and I don't think that's a concern on our end. But I think, you know, looking at it from from that generalized perspective on what's to come is is something that, you know, really is going to going to fall to to council on. So at this point, we're seeking direction on the future use of Flock and other ALPR technology in Lewisville. As I mentioned earlier, the technology is being incorporated into additional aspects of law enforcement, including the photo and red light traffic enforcement systems. And like I mentioned, some do have a strategic partnership with Flock Safety. Next week, August 19, 2025, at council's regular meeting, the Flock Service Agreement renewal will be presented, and that will be a decision point for this process. I do thank you for your time and listening to the information that we presented. And I believe City Manager Langley has some additional information that she would like to provide for you to consider.
So first, I'd like to clarify, so this item, it will not be on the 19th agenda for in terms of the Flock contract. It would be the September 2nd agenda. Should I get the sharepoint and do it that way? Chief? No, it's not. A yes, please. Thank you. All right, does that work for you? So you have an option to do what?
We're going to take a five-minute technology break here.
Fascinating technologies. Thanks, Sam.
Councilmember Cooperman? Wet cleanup on aisle three?
All right, thank you for giving us a break for the technical difficulty. So my presentation tonight is really focusing on what we've heard from the public over the last couple of months. There have been a lot of emails submitted to council specific to this issue. And so my presentation is focusing more so from the perspective of the people that have been submitting comments. Next slide, please. And so there is a there's like a white paper that was prepared by the Colorado Division of Criminal Justice that looked in detail at automated license plate readers and provided an overview for public safety professionals. And so this is just kind of summary. It's reiterating what Chief Gudere said about usage for officers. You know, the hot list automatically identifying tracked vehicles and plates of interest since alerts when hit, increase arrest rates due to quicker response times using real-time data and alerts, collect millions of vehicle plate data to investigate current and past crimes, and the data collected can provide a geographic timeline of vehicle travel patterns. What we've heard from the public and then also what we've seen and through numerous articles that you've seen around the the Denver metro area, that there's concern about infringement on privacy and civil liberties. There's lack of consistent state or federal regulations on data retention and usage, which raises questions of how information is stored, shared and protected, and the risk of misuse or unauthorized access. Next slide, please. And the article goes on to provide summary of arguments for and against ALPR. The arguments for are law enforcement benefits, so helping locate stolen vehicles, identifying vehicles linked to criminal activities, locating individuals with outstanding warrants, and other benefits related to public safety, crime reduction and crime prevention. Efficiency, so automate the process of reading license plates, making it faster and more efficient than manual methods. This efficiency can be valuable in investigations and can help law enforcement respond more quickly to potential threats. Traffic management, it can be used for traffic management such as monitoring congestion, tracking traffic flow and identifying vehicles violating traffic regulations. And then finally, Amber Alerts and Missing Persons. This can quickly locate vehicles associated with Amber Alerts or missing persons. The arguments against ALPR, if you could go back, Sam, please, are the privacy concerns. So the potential invasion of privacy as the widespread use raises concerns about constant surveillance as they record all vehicles and license plates, not just those linked to criminal activities. Data security, the storage and retention of data raises concerns about data security, unauthorized access to or misuse. The collected information could result in privacy violations and potential abuse. The misuse of data, risk that the data collected by an ALPR can be misused or abused, either by law enforcement or other entities. And this includes tracking individuals' movements without sufficient justification. And then accuracy accuracy issues and that ALPR systems are not infallible may misread license plates. Next slide. As you've received in your emails, there have been numerous articles cited, some from ACLU, some from different stories that you're hearing throughout the country that you're hearing more locally in the Denver metro area. These are just some recent, you know, going back to July of 2025, a couple of very recent. And it just, you know, you can see why the public has expressed and submitted comments to the council about the utilization of Flock cameras. Next slide, please. There was another ACLU white paper in March of 2022 that evaluated and provided some analysis of these eight items that are listed. Next slide, please. And with it, there's some recommendations that if for agencies that are considering the use of ALPR, they recommended that any non-hit data should be permitted to be held only for very short periods of time. No hot list should be used unless they are certified by independent auditors as meeting the highest standards of due process, legitimacy and reliability. Law enforcement agencies should not share license plate reader data with third parties that do not conform to the above principles and should be transparent regarding with whom license plate reader data is shared. Communities and their elected representatives should be especially hesitant to embrace network surveillance cameras. And communities that have not yet enacted a community control over police surveillance ordinance should not permit the police that serve them to deploy surveillance cameras without first receiving approval from the city council or other elected governing body. If you go on next to, there's another article from the ACLU that dates to February 2023, and it's titled "How to Pump the Brakes on Your Police Department's Use of Flocks Mass Surveillance License Plate Readers." And within this article, they address the data retention, data sharing usage by others, and the database use. And they provide some approaches in which if agencies are going to utilize ALPR systems, you know, items that you can put in place through the the agreement with Flock can be very, very restrictive, all the way down to the least restrictive. So related to data retention, the least restrictive is the data stored for no longer than 30 days in compliance with Flock's records retention policy. So currently, our data has been stored for 30 days. A moderately restrictive approach could be that photos or data shall be deleted or destroyed by Flock no more than 72 hours after such photos or data are first captured by, provided to or shared with Flock. There's there's other considerations to be taken with this, but this would be an option. The very most restrictive would be that photos or data captured shall be deleted or destroyed by Flock to more than three minutes. So Chief talked to, you know, with the hit list, within a matter of seconds, you get notification that the license plate was on the hit list. And so under the most restrictive, the data would only be stored for three minutes. Again, this is just the range of what some other agencies have considered. Next slide for data sharing and use by others. The least restrictive would be that Flock may access, use, preserve and or disclose the ALPR footage to law enforcement authorities, government officials and or third parties. That would be throughout the entire network. A moderately restrictive would be that the photos or data should not be sent to or shared with any other person or entity unless permission to do so is granted in writing and the request pertains to the investigation of an Amber Alert or violent felony. And then the most restrictive would be that the photos or data captured should not be sent to, shared with or used by or for any other person or entity than the agency that took it. And then my last slide is related to database use. So the least restrictive
Sorry, on the last slide, can you say where we are? You did that two sides ago.
Oh, so on the data sharing use by others, I think that Chief and Scott would need to correct me if I'm wrong, but we were sharing internally to agencies within Colorado. At one point, we did find that it also included one federal agency, which was the post office. And then I just also want to note that there was, through a request that was submitted, you know, we found out that, and there's a difference between, and I'm going to need Chief to Um, you know, we found out that um and there's a difference between, and I'm gonna need uh Chief to describe this. There's a difference between sharing and search. And so we had authorized sharing of our data with agencies within Colorado, um, not recognizing or realizing that there is the ability um through a toggle of a, a toggle um for nationwide search. And so if there was an agency that did something through the nationwide search, it's my understanding that it would comb through all of the data of the flock cameras that um systems that were allowing the uh application through the nationwide search. And so people could collect information from Louisville. Uh, we weren't sharing with those agencies from the standpoint of where we were giving them authorized authority to share. It was a search file. And once that was identified, um, that was turned off so that we were no longer a part of the nationwide search, which also means we couldn't participate to search nationwide. Um, and then we were sharing with agencies within Colorado and then uh uh took that a step further and shut it down completely so that there's no access. Did I explain that correctly?
Yeah, to the best of my understanding on how that works. Um, and I'll just kind of elaborate just briefly. The in working with our flock representative, we had been told from the beginning, we own the data, we control the data, we can grant access, we can deny access, it is your data. And so we, we did not believe that we were included in this national search. To the point that Scott Moore also confirmed that our nationwide toggle switch was off. So we don't know if it was a technical issue, if it was some other systematic thing that occurred um that we weren't aware of. But we do not share access nor grant access to any out of state, out of Colorado agencies. Um, and the postal inspector's office was our local office. So we had enabled sharing capabilities with that specific office. Um, and then as we kind of reviewed all of our entities and organizations, we opted to remove the postal inspector from the Louisville Post Office from that because they are tied to a federal organization. But yeah, you, you explained it as, as best as I understand it as well.
All right. And then last slide is database use. Um, so the least restrictive would be agency grants flock a non-exclusive worldwide perpetual royalty-free right and license to enable law enforcement monitoring against law enforcement hot lists as well as provide footage search access to law enforcement for investigative purposes only. Moderately, moderately restrictive would be in addition to that, you add language that states warning the data, database producing this hit flag does not comply with the 1974 U.S. Privacy Act accuracy and completeness requirements. As such, this hit flag may be inaccurate, must be independently confirmed before it is acted upon. And then building upon that with the most restrictive, in addition to um the previous two items, you would add that ALPR photos or data captured or shared may be compared only to hot list created by the government agency that provided the ALPR photo or data. So again, these um are uh potential approaches that are identified in that ACLU article. You know, if council were to want to proceed with the utilization of the ALPR system, um, there are opportunities, is my understanding, to coordinate um the controls that would be put in place as to who has access, how we share the data, and then also how long the data is stored. So thank you.
Okay, is there any more um presentation from staff? All right, um, why don't we uh open it up to council questions and then we'll take some public comment? If you got questions of um either uh city manager or the chief or Scott or Trevor. Good time to ask. For the moment, no. Do we have some public comment? Okay, um. We've done this before. Most of you've uh participated at one time or another. You come up to the uh, if you want to do public comment, you fill out a form ticket to the city clerk. Uh, should call your name when it's time, when you, your name gets called, come up to the podium and introduce yourself and let us know if you're from Louisville or not. You have three minutes to say what's on your mind uh about this. And six, if you pool your time uh with somebody else that's present or online who agrees to that, you don't have to speak for three or six minutes. And if everybody can just make sure not to clap or boo or whatnot, to get everybody up there, it'll be a little more encouraging, so.
First up is Catherine Smith, followed by Tanya Samaru.
Hi, I'm Catherine Smith. I live in Ward Three. Um, I wanna just emphasize that we are really living in extraordinary times. Um, just this week, the President of the United States has taken over some level of control of law enforcement in the District of Columbia. And so I want to suggest to you that your decision carries more weight. And I think that we're in an environment where um it's very hard to actually know how your technology will be used in six months or a year or 18 months from now. So to me, the prudent course of action is to um do nothing, leave the cameras turned off. I um as a woman um was horrified to read about how the technology has been used to find, and I assume ultimately prosecute women who are seeking reproductive health care in states where that health care has been um restricted. And um I would very much not like, like, say it the positive way, let's not do that, let's not go there. Uh, let's not collect information that um penalizes women. And again, being in unprecedented times, shocked to find that the Vice President of the United States is openly calling for women to lose the vote. Um, and so I, I'd really feel like this is just not normal times. And we shouldn't make the decision pretending that it is. Um, and then when I look at the scope of the technology, I do find it stunning that basically any person with access to the flock system um has the ability to initiate a nationwide search for a person, the equivalent of what used to be called a manhunt just by a few keystrokes. And this, this is creating a completely different kind of world than the world that I initially grew up in. I recognize that um the law doesn't protect people who are out in public and doesn't protect your information. But I really think that if the founders of the Constitution had envisioned anything like the technology that we have, the provisions in the Constitution would be different. But you guys are the control that exists because the Constitution, the framers of the Constitution really didn't foresee something like this. And so I hope you will take your responsibility very, very seriously. You take all your responsibilities seriously, but this one, I just feel really is serious. Thank you for everything you do and for giving me a chance to speak up.
Thank you, Catherine.
Next up is Tanya Samaru, followed by Ashley Cook.
Hello. I'm your summer Louisville resident. Um, so I just want to open with saying that I like and trust our police department. And um I want to say Chief Gutierrez has been really transparent and especially generous with this person's time and answering a lot of questions a lot of other people would have hung up on. And I am knowing the police department and I'm okay with their use of ALPR data as they described using. And that's where it stops. Um, the problem is that the system in place does not match what's in the packet, the uses of the data described. That's just a policy. The, the contract for the city allows a lot of other data to be collected and used in different ways, and that's my problem. And those vehicle fingerprints, I assume, are not deleted after 30 days. And your patent application at Flock allows you to also identify people, body fingerprinting technology based on race, gender, all that. So um whether you're doing it or not, you can do it. Um, so Flock's safety has not provided adequate software controls so our community can set its own privacy um can make its own privacy choices. And under our contract, you can retain fingerprint data and other data. Um, the ALPR data is, is not my problem. Um, so I have a problem with my data being anonymized and, and you know, being able to worldwide license for doing whatever with. Um, so this is happening in councils all over the country. And police who want to use these tools are stuck in the middle. And um Locks NDA limits what our police can say about the system capabilities, which is the opposite of community policing. So that forces um reasonable questions to be met with vague answers, and that kind of undermines trust. Because when people feel like they're not getting a truthful answer, they get mad. And um when there's backlash or investigation, Flock always says, we provide the tool, you just use them how you want. So I want to say Flock needs to provide clear usable controls so Louisville can decide who sees our data. Um, it needs to be explicit that our location data is not available for other uses. And um I just want to stand up because I feel like the police um and, and residents, you know, you can get grumpy with your police department and you can say, you know, this thing about the confusing control that Chief in Mount Pleasant, Illinois, is now that this is the subject of a congressional investigation. Said the same thing about the controls. I thought I had it said one way. I didn't understand it went another way. The only people in the room with, who can, you know, provide the, the control and let our police use the data the way we want is block. So, you know, the tension in the country this is causing with our police, it's all of the flock. Do you want to, do you want to give people the privacy they want? Or do you want to cause friction and get your camera shut off? Please pressure block to give us the control we want. Thanks.
Thank you, Tanya.
Next up is Ashley Cook, followed by Everett Williams.
My name's Ashley and I am the Safety Manager at Advent Health Vista Hospital. And uh I just wanted to first start by sharing that healthcare workers are five times more likely to experience workplace violence than any other industry. Um, we often are caring for people who are in a, in their most vulnerable state. And so as a hospital, we have been working to improve the safety um and, and purchased two flock cameras about two years ago. Uh, this purchase was made in an effort to better support the safety of our staff. And since this purchase, we've seen several successful outcomes, and I wanted to share those with you. Uh, we were able to identify a missing person that arrived on our property. Um, and the police department was uh able to help intercept and provide care to that individual. We also had an individual that came that was a Jane Doe that showed up on our property in really poor condition and was left at our emergency department entrance. We were able to use uh employees giving a statement about the vehicle that they saw that individual dropped off in. And through the use of our flock cameras, we were able to find that patient's mom and reunite the two of them before that patient passed. Um, we have been able to use this system to input any disgruntled employees who've been terminated from the facility. There have been several individuals who have verbally assaulted our staff and arrived on our property. We would not have known that or been able to intercept that without the flock cameras. We have also been able to deter crime by having the police department respond with more regular patrols to help our staff. Um, and we work closely with the police department. We are in control of the data that we share, and we have chosen to share that data with the police department in an effort to improve the safety of our facility. Um, it's really all I wanted to say. I'm in full support of Flock. I've seen a lot of benefits um in how it's improved the safety of our staff. We often tell our staff, if there is domestic violence, they are welcome to share that information with us so that they know that they're protected. Staff take comfort in knowing that that's an additional protective measure that we've taken for their safety. And oh, one more, uh, we did have an employee who was stalked after an encounter at a gas station and that individual came on our property multiple times, brought flowers to one of our staff member wine and um was escorted off of the facility. But again, that's an opportunity for us to be able to intercept that before it comes into our hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Up next is Everett Williams, followed by Mark Cathcart.
Excuse me. Good evening, everybody. So I am Everett. I've been associated with Louisville since, not to date myself, but 1986. Um, one of the things I love about Louisville is it has been voted number one in the nation a place to live and desired place to live. When we go on our cell phones, I don't know how many of you guys noticed you talk about someone on your cell phone and it pops up like you open an app and now all of a sudden what you're talking about pops up, right? Or if you go into a grocery store, maybe you see yourself on camera or something like that. So 2025, I think the whole privacy thing, there's cameras everywhere. There, there, that's just the reality of it. Um, so I'm gonna ask people to change their mindset when it comes to the flock safety because that's what it's meant to do. It's meant to keep people safe. To, for law enforcement to be able to get an alert, immediate alert of a felon, homicide suspect, robbery suspect, armed person, stolen vehicle, uh, that's huge. As soon as it hits the city, they could be on it. That is huge. Um, and make no mistake about it, everything has some sort of supervision, open records. The supervisor has the ability to see what's going on, see what the troops are doing, right? And Louisville can have full control of the flock safety system. Now, I will be more than happy to meet with anybody, everybody, councils, citizens, as to my personal experience with it. But I will tell you, to get rid of it would be a fatal error. Word gets around, people talk, people who have warrants go to jail, they transfer from jail to jail. And if they take Louisville and realize they got rid of the tools to detect them, they're gonna come to Louisville to hide out or do their crime because they know they could get away with it. Uh, Flock's safety could provide some very good investigative leads. Um, missing persons, all sorts of stuff. And make no mistake about it, there is grave consequences for those who misuse the system. It's just like everything else. It's no different than law enforcement running a plate in the car. It's the same thing. Personal entities could get it. I see stores getting them. I see uh hospitals getting them. So why wouldn't we want the ability to have the information? Because I'd rather have it and not need it than need it and not have it. Bottom line is, we are in full control of everything there, regardless of what Flock sets up. Uh, Louisville could do their own thing and set it up the way they want to. But I'd urge you to think of the consequences uh as part of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Everett.
Up next is Mark Cathcart.
Good evening, council, city manager, mayor, police chief Gutierrez. Um, I normally appear before you as uh Mark Cathcart from Louisville. I think for the first time, I would like to appear before you tonight as a retired professional. In 1983, I first came to America to help design the world's first home banking system. I joined IBM in 1987. By 1999, I'd been elected to the IBM Academy of Technology. In uh the late 90s, I worked on the world's then largest um internet banking system. I worked on internet banking systems across Europe. And I've also done reviews in America on um a number of our major banks here on their internet banking systems. So I'd like just to point out that what you should have as a city to protect your data. This isn't about flock. I personally don't have an issue with flock if you have the right controls in place, but we don't appear to. So you should have for any video, any image data, which is what I understand flock collects is image data, it is not live streaming. Um, image data, drones, the police are likely to acquire drones very soon. You should. You should have as a city.
That was suspenseful, Mark, but we need to hear the rest of it.
In being in public, you're not protected by the Fourth Amendment of the US Constitution, but.
Mark, can I interrupt you for just a second? We did, we lost you for about 30 seconds of that. We got, we should have, and then you went out and we're all waiting and just wrapped suspense for what you were going to say right after that. So I'm just giving you opportunity because we, we didn't hear all of it.
Thank you, mayor. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So you should have a policy in place with appropriate controls and appropriate punishments for breach of those controls, right? For any image data, video data, photographs, drone data, all of these things are going to be on your plate in the next couple of years. Most of the things that Chief Gutierrez said that Flock doesn't do, they already are doing or will do, right? The first concern you should have is that Flock is a privately held company owned by their founders and investors. It is inevitable they will get acquired. If they get acquired by Facebook, are you okay with that? What happens to your data there, our data? So you really must develop as a city, a policy with the appropriate controls and punishments for incorrect or illegal access to that data. The gentleman that was on before me is absolutely right if Flock doesn't get hacked. You might remember that Cambridge Analytica threw computer games on Facebook, exposed and gave the data for 87 million people. If it can happen to Facebook, it can certainly happen to Flock. They'll deny it. We should have protections in place. So again, I'm surprised that no one's mentioned Denver that just pulled out of the Flock system tonight. Well, not, they didn't pull out of it tonight, but they, they pulled out of it last month. And I'm surprised no one's mentioned it tonight. There are lots of specific concerns with Flock. I would like to thank the second speaker. I've forgotten her name. But she identified a number of them. All of the things that people are concerned about will or are possible. With Flock now, they will be, right? Number of people in the car, the race, anyone that's had a speeding ticket, and I'm ashamed to say I have, or not speeding ticket, for a light camera ticket on South Boulder Road knows that you get your face. So it's going to happen. Speed averaging. Yes, I know I'm done, mayor. Thank you.
Yes, thanks so much.
Next up is Helen Moschak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I am sharing, Scott Baskerville agreed to share his time, pool his time with me. He's on the phone number that starts 650-753-9413. And so I would like six minutes on the clock, please. Thank you. City council members, thank you for your time. Mass surveillance systems like Flock create a risky and ineffective framework for tracking people's movements, storing enormous amounts of sensitive data and sharing it with outside agencies, often beyond our control. Let's start with the data. Independent research paints a very different picture than Flock's marketing. A 2009 meta-analysis by Northeastern and Cambridge found surveillance cameras have limited impact on crime, mostly in parking lots, not in neighborhoods or streets. And peer-reviewed studies remain inconclusive. Locally, Denver recovered just 170 stolen cars with Flock cameras out of 8,500 automobile thefts during their pilot year. The Denver City Council voted this summer not to review, to renew their $600,000 Flock camera contract. Once collected, this data can be repurposed once it is shared in ways we can't predict or regulate. Louisville Police Department policy bars, but can't stop other agencies from sharing data for immigration enforcement. And there's no policy on our books or enforcement mechanism for stopping its use by these or other third parties to monitor reproductive health access, LGBT plus activities, religious practices, or First Amendment expression. We shouldn't create conditions ripe for abuse. This isn't just a policy concern, it's a constitutional one. Courts have ruled that mass data collection without individualized suspicion or a warrant violates Fourth Amendment protections. When cities contract with private surveillance vendors who are monetizing the data and the services to make money, oversight can't fully prevent harm. We should be conferring with the ACLU, the Georgetown Law Center on Privacy and Technology, and the Electronic Frontier Foundation for their advice and guidance. Experts warn us that these surveillance systems have the potential to chill free movement, suppress dissent, and disproportionately affect marginalized communities. These centralized databases are vulnerable to abuse and third-party exploitation. So I urge you to take action. End the Flock camera service contract and return the cameras. Pass an ordinance that prohibits city-sponsored surveillance that collects or shares resident activity without probable cause or warrant. And reaffirm our civil liberties and privacy as essential to public safety. Mass surveillance isn't a compromise, it's a threat. Let's choose a future built on trust, transparency, and the right to live without being watched or profiled by AI. And finally, let's talk priorities. Let's invest in people instead of surveillance. This $77,000 is better budgeted for police department salary adjustments, professional development programs, and community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Okay. I think that's all of the public comment that we have tonight. Thank you very much for that. Let's bring it back to council for some discussion and direction on what we want to do with respect to the Flock cameras. I think we know that there is a contract up that we can enter into or potentially negotiate or not enter into or enter into for a period of months. We're in a situation where we're not, we don't have Flock cameras on right now. And council members love to hear from you. So, Dietrich?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, mayor, and thanks for all the presentations and public comments. I think it's going to surprise many of you that I think we ought to end our Flock program right, right away for all of the reasons that we just heard on, on public comment from Catherine and Helen and others about the very real and I, and I think grave privacy concerns. And although I'm sympathetic that, you know, I suppose in a perfect world, there's a way to configure this in a way that doesn't implicate those concerns. So far, our track record on doing that isn't so good. And I don't know if it's because Flock toggled the switch back the other way or we misunderstood the toggle or some other reason about the toggle. But, you know, we thought we weren't searchable nationwide. We were. We're not, you know, exactly sure if that's sharing or not sharing or what they can do. What we do know is in the period of a month, there were hundreds of thousands of searches from across the country on our system, many of which didn't meet our policy of having either a case number or a reason code. Or if they had a reason code, it was XXX or any reason or no reason or a single letter or a single number that I think are transparently meaningless and, and weren't really flagged through our audit process or any other audit process. And so I think although in a perfect world, maybe there's a way to control this and make it so the benefits outweigh the costs. I don't think that's the world we're living in. I think that the technology is, is probably evolving faster than our ability to keep up with it and certainly our ability to, you know, sort of even accurately control the user interface to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. For, for those reasons, and I'm happy to discuss them more as, you know, if this continues for a while. But I think it's actually really important that, that we end this program as soon as possible.
Thank you. Other council members? Yes. Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree entirely. I think, I think that on its base, I think it's, you know, net positive, it's a tool, right? Tool for our, our police officers to use. And when used well and used for the right reasons, it, it can be a benefit and it can help prevent crime. It can help solve crime. I think it's, you know, yeah, I think the idea and what it's pitched as is, is a, is a good idea. I think we saw some success in Louisville around construction theft. I, I think that we made a curious decision a year or two ago to keep the cameras but not put them in places that would be useful. It's like, okay, so we're going to keep them, but we're not going to put them in the places where the police officers think they would be useful. And so, you know, it's kind of like either let them use them the way they think they need to be used to prevent crime and to catch crime or don't use them. But we were kind of caught like in between these two decision points, in, in my opinion. But I think, you know, what, where I, where I, my decision comes in is, and I've said this to a few people otherwise, but, you know, I think there's the perception of safety and real safety. And I think the Flock cameras are meant to create a sense of safety for our community, both real and imagined. And when you have a, a portion of our community that feels the Flock cameras make them less safe. And maybe again, that's a perception of, of them being less safe or possibility that it'll be abused and a concern that these cameras make, make our community less safe and maybe less safe for specific portions of our community, some more vulnerable populations, that the benefit starts to be diminished and, and, and actually becomes a negative outcome is that like, you know, people feel less safe because of the safety measure. And again, that might be misinformed potentially. It's, you know, we're looking at California or Denver or Texas, and we're looking at examples that could happen. And maybe we shouldn't be so afraid of Flock cameras, but, but we are. Or maybe we shouldn't be so afraid of what the federal government could do with it, but we are. And so if it doesn't add to the feeling of safety in our community, is it accomplishing its, its, its task, it's what we, what we set out to do? So, you know, I, I think it's an interesting moment because I think if, if left to my own devices, I'd be like, I, I think this is probably better than it is worse. And I think the fears are maybe out, aren't, aren't as big as they are. But, you know, I, I think in this, in this day and age, and in some of the things we're seeing from the federal government that feel very over the top and, and non-transparent and are we accidentally enabling a federal government to abuse its power? I think that the chances are too high for me to feel comfortable with the pros and cons here. And so I'm, I, I think I end up in the same place, just maybe not quite as quickly or as easily. I, I still think that for me, the right direction to go is to, is to continue to not be using Flock cameras as we are not using them now. Whether we cancel it, whether we delay, whether we put more research into better control. But I, I think using them tomorrow is the wrong thing. So, so that's, that's kind of where I, where I fall on it.
Thank you. Others? Go ahead, councilmember.
I'll just be quick for the moment. I tend to agree with both councilmembers Huffner and Dickinson. Happy to have further conversation, but that's where I stand at the moment.
I'm sorry. I think I'd like to hear the councilmember's comments on the topic if he wants to share them.
Well, I think he can if he wants to. I, I think there is a notion that a person can say as much or as little as they want.
True. He just mentioned that he had other points to make and just wasn't making them until perhaps later. So I was just encouraging, I would, I'm interested to hear what those points would be. And maybe other residents would as well.
Others? Yes, councilmember Maylin.
Thank you. So when we started utilizing this technology in our fire areas, it was for a specific reason and goal. And from my perspective, clearly by the cases presented by our police today and, you know, the private sector where they're positioned, they can work. I have no doubt in that. Now, when we get to the point in the conversation where we're talking about, you know, expanding the, the, the use of this technology outside of the fire areas more broadly in Louisville, you know, in addition to the privacy current concerns that have already been mentioned, I feel like that's a movement that requires a level of community engagement that, that has not been done yet. I appreciate the engagement that has been done. I've, I've seen the booths. I've seen the conversations with community members. But I, I can't help but wonder, like, are there voices that aren't going up to the booths and engaging who are actually the folks who are most concerned about this technology? So from my perspective and what I've heard from community members as well, I feel like, you know, we pride ourselves in community engagement. And I feel like if nothing else, this is a topic that requires broader engagement through a survey or whatever before we decide to take this out of the fire areas into other parts of Louisville. So, you know, at this point in time, it, also with the landscape we're working in federally, I'm at the point right now where I feel like it's, it's best to not continue our contract. Doesn't mean we might not evaluate it at a future date, this technology, and have other policies in place to help us facilitate that discussion. But where we're at right now, I, I think it's best to retire what we have and not renew the contract in the coming years.
Thank you, councilmember. Couple of other councilmembers, councilmember Fahey, councilmember Kern. Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. So I just wanted to thank the police department. And I really appreciate the resident acknowledgements that they do trust our police department. I personally, it's implicit. I'm, I'm safer in Louisville. I know that because of the work that your department does directly for this community, for, for me, my family, my friends and neighbors. Just want to thank you for that. And I do appreciate the fact that this was brought to us as a safety measure, theft measure. I mean, it didn't really affect like a lot of people personally, but it certainly affected the, the cost maybe that would have gone into, believe it or not, even a greater cost in building our homes had that, those safety measures been not in place. What I hear overwhelmingly though, is there is no trust in the product, in what your company is doing with the data, what Flock is doing with this data. This has nothing to do with our police department and the fact that, I'll, I'll trust you with all, you can, I mean, you can have any information you want about me. I would trust every officer on that team. And I think most of the people in this community would. And we also believe that you're not going to violate our values as a community and as, you know, as councilmembers. The wishes of our community to have federal agencies in this town, in, as far as. as far as we're concerned, inappropriately targeting people. I don't believe that any member of your department would do that ever. What concerns me is what I heard tonight, that there are aspects of this software that are not fully controlled internally. That is very disturbing. And this is definitely not directed at our police department. This is a useful tool. And I really appreciate the time that officers have taken to engage with the community, engage with me to help my understanding. And I really appreciate the residents who've taken a lot of their time to bring this information to us and staff as well in researching it. This is not a decision that comes lightly to make choices that impact the, um, the life, the health and safety of our community. It sounds to me though, what the Flock cameras have been most successful doing is property versus human health and safety. If this was the number one tool in your tool belt for human health and safety, I would say let's put all the restrictions in place to, you know, keep the data here. But it's mostly about property is what I keep hearing. And I'm really concerned, and I, I very much trust the information that, um, that Tanya presented in researching your patents, as this is her literal expertise of livelihood, that the, you have the right and the capability to take more data than just the core license plate data and information that we see and that our department sees. If that is being housed somewhere in some database that is not physically in our possession, if anybody has possession of that other than us, then I, I do think that the concerns of our community are validated. And that is not where I was even a week ago in understanding how this information was used. And I'm looking at staff too, because I want them to understand my opinion on this as I've had conversations with our executive management team. And I, I'm disappointed that the product isn't what we have been promised, to be honest with you. I'm disappointed that I have to ask our police department to work harder to keep this community safe, to fight crime more, in a more challenging way, less efficient way, because we can't trust what Flock is doing with this information. So I, I completely agree with a few of the comments that Councilmember Hamilton made about looking at this in the future, when safeguards are in place, when we have a better understanding of how the data is used. Then I would like for us to use it. I just am really disappointed that that's not there. And the reassurances that that will be there aren't it. A whole month, as Councilmember Hefner said, thousands of inquiries on our, on our residents' data and we had, and you had no knowledge, is, is bothersome to me. And marginal accountability on Flock's side, I would have to say. And that, that hurts me to have to have this conversation because I am really about officers being efficient and being able to do more with their time. And I love the, I love the 20-second response. I was originally in favor of like, let's super restrict this data, like, make it as tight as we can. It's us only. You keep us safer. This is one of those times though, that as the mayor pro tem mentioned, I think really representing the concerns of the few, given that these, a lot of these are privacy concerns. I think in this case, those concerns outweigh the good of so many. And I normally would not feel that way. I just think that these kinds of mistrust and this kind of violation, again, not with our police department. I cannot iterate that enough. But with the security, I mean, there's a reason I'm not on social media because I don't trust where that data and my information will end up. And I trusted that information would not end up someplace. I, I'm hoping that I can still trust that. But to learn that there's possibilities and that our residents' concerns are, could be validated, terrifies me as their representative, legislative representative. So my opinion, based on what we've heard today and the, the outcry of concerns is that we do need to suspend at a minimum the Flock camera program. And until we have better reassurances that this data is secure in this city, not anywhere else, not on somebody else's database, but it is secure here. And our chief and his department are the only people who can access that information. And until, and I think until our community, our police chief can have those securities, it's just too difficult to move forward with your product. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll just add a few comments. Thank you for, first of all, thank you for, oh, Deb does. Okay, I thought she, all right, yeah. I, I would like to go last. Go ahead, Deb. I'm sorry, I missed you there.
Hi, I, I was just waiting for Judy. I agree with everything that's already been voiced. Particularly my complete faith and confidence in the Louisville Police Department. I think they do an amazing job. And I would like to support them in any way that I can. The Flock camera system, on the other hand, is something that I just can't wrap my head around. There's too many things that are risky about that, uh, security-wise. And so because of that, for all of the reasons that have already been mentioned, I am also opposed to continuing the Flock camera system at this time until the security on it has been greatly improved.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. I was very much wanting and, and have kept an open mind on this subject. I wasn't, I was probably, you know, I was interested in, in hearing, you know, compelling arguments and, and, uh, data from Flock in, in some of the materials that we had. But I, I am concerned like the others who've spoken tonight in, in many of the concerns that have been talked about. What I would also say is, I think, just a couple of other things. One, I think our community engagement was pretty good. And I value Scott's work because I went by his tent myself and asked my wife to listen to his presentation. And she was pretty impressed with it. She's a hard person to impress on stuff like that. So that's just one data point, but I think we did, I think we did all right on that. I, I hesitate to think that every decision that we make needs to have exhaustive discussion. But I all, you know, and exhaustive polling or, or survey in the community, that's part of our job is to re-present our citizens here on these decisions. I think it was very helpful and I appreciate the chief and I appreciate the city manager distinguishing between searches and at granting access. Because it, you know, granting access, I have every confidence that our, our, uh, the police forces has done, been very careful about how we do that. We can, we can certainly argue over how wide that should be or could be. It's the searches that I think are causing problem that I'm, I'm hearing from everybody. It's the outside access and use for that. I, and so I, I'm not gonna add a whole lot to that, the discussion because I, I agree certainly with Councilmember Kern, who I think stated it very eloquently about what the issues that I'm most concerned about are. And I'm, and my disappointment. But what I would also say is that I, like her and like Councilmember Fahy, and perhaps Councilmember Hamilton, if I understood her comments, willing to potentially at some point revisit this issue. I am very keen on visiting the issue of some of the privacy protections that were discussed by people from the public because I think those, I think we owe it to our citizens to address those because these technologies are moving very quickly. And they deserve, I think, a good, solid consideration of that. And I think we can give that to them. And that, I think, will give us probably as good a feedback as we can get on the privacy issues from the standpoint of what the people want. So I, I think the consensus is what it is here. And that is to, to not proceed with the contract in the, at least for the moment, and perhaps more permanently. I think if, if there's such a time that the council wants to revisit this, there's a way for us to do that. But I don't hear that right now. And I hear that this is just not in the cards for us. So I think that's where we are. And I, unless there are other comments from council, I think we are at the end of our decision point. All right. With that, thank you from the, the community for the good and great work that you all do at the police department to keep us safe. I think that you've done everything you needed and should do on this. And I think, I appreciate the discussion from councilmembers and the community. It's been very, very helpful. So do we have a motion? To adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.